Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 3rd, 2012 work session of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. And I'd like to begin this evening by asking Chef Pritchard to come into the room and to the microphone. And I'd like to thank her and her students from the Culinary Arts Program. And she's going to say a few words and then ask the students to introduce themselves.
Thank you so much for enjoying our wonderful food. The students had a great time making it. And we have students from all different high schools in Cabarrus County. And actually, they made all this food. Three hours they worked yesterday, and the rest was done today from seven o'clock until about two o'clock, I guess, when we finally got here. So just want to thank you so much for enjoying it and thank you for letting us to do that for you. And I'll let everybody kind of introduce themselves quickly. And Alexia Moore, by the way, is my chef, and she will be graduating in January, right? And you'll be going to Johnson Wells in March.
On the way to you, Alexia.
Say it again.
Paul Sidotson.
Christopher Nuss.
Simon Smallwood.
Trey Reeves.
Dominique Delory.
Chancellor Woodward.
Tom Haskins.
Colleen Lee.
Rebecca Litt.
Chef Pritchard and these fine students provided food for those of you that were with us tonight for our reception, for our outgoing board members, and also for our incoming board members. So at this time, I'd like to ask Judge Hamby to come forward, please. And we have four new board members to join our Board of Education tonight, and he will be swearing them in. And we'll go in alphabetical order, beginning with Mr. David Harrison.
Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, David Paul Harrison, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I do.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Mr. Jeff Phillips? If you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you, Jeffrey Northridge Phillips, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I do.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. Do you, Barry Cromwell Shoemaker, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I do.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
Yes, I will.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. Do you, Robert Patrick Walter, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof?
I do.
And that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Judge Hamby, thank you so much for coming tonight and helping us with this. And to our family members of our incoming board members, we welcome you tonight and look forward to working with you and your families. So thank you very much. Next, I'd like to open the floor. Rob, come on up and join us. Open the floor at this time for nominations for Chair of the Board of Education for the next year. And so I'll open the floor at this time.
Dr. Shepherd, excuse me. I would like to make a motion that the board nominate Mr. Lynn Schue for the position of Board Chair for the next term.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Are there any other nominations? Then we will entertain the motion to elect Chairman Schue, Lynn Schue, as your chairman for the next year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Congratulations, Chairman Schue.
Thank you, board members, for your confidence and putting your confidence and trust in me to do this for another year. It hasn't been easy, but I'm gonna do the best I can, just like I did last year and all that. But I'd like to open the floor now for nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And Dr. Shepherd. It's my distinct honor to nominate Blake Keiger as Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Vice Chair, Mr. Blake Keiger. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of Blake being the Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Blake, congratulations. Now, may I have a... Now, may I have a motion now that we close the nominations and that we move on to the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, board members, we can move on with our agenda items here. And the first item on the agenda is setting the agenda. And I need a motion that we approve the agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Blake, and I have a second?
Second.
Second, who's seconded? Barry? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, now, we have Mr. Enriquez, our Board Attorney. He's gonna talk to us about the signing of the Code of Ethics, which is a requirement that Mr. Enriquez can do that for us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I placed a copy in each board member's place of our Code of Ethics. Policy 2120 calls for all board members to sign the Code of Ethics at the organizational meeting. So this is something we do each year. The policy also sets forth the Code of Ethics, which is based on the one developed by the North Carolina School Board Association for school boards. I won't read the entire code to you, but I'll highlight a few things just from my years as Board Attorney to remind everybody on. The second bullet point says that we all recognize that a board member's responsibility is not to run the schools, but to see that the schools are well-run. Obviously, our role is to provide that leadership and direction, which is the first bullet point. And you provide that by adopting policies and giving direction to the superintendent and to the school staff. You need to attend meetings and make your policy decisions after full discussion here at the board hearings, and base your decisions on the fallible facts and your own independent judgment. Obviously, we've got seven individuals. It's fine to disagree. I imagine over the course of the year, there'll be things we disagree on. You need to make an independent judgment. And the guiding principle, which is at the end, is making the decision in what's in the best interest of the children. And so, and I think that's the tradition. We may disagree on what that is, but as long as you're exercising your judgment for the interests of the children of Cabarrus County schools, we're in good shape. A few other points. I think free expression among board members is important, and I think clear communications with staff and the superintendent are important. You, as a board member, if you haven't already, you know, from time to time, will get complaints and concerns raised by parents about, "I'm not happy about what's happening with my child" or "happening in the classroom." The important thing to remember, and it's addressed in this ethics policy as well, is that those, when you get those concerns, you need to communicate those to the superintendent. It's his job to investigate that. We've got several policies in place to also address concerns. We've got a formal grievance process, so if a parent has a concern, it's a grievance. One thing that an individual board member should never do is say, "Well, you know, I promise we'll get that taken care of," or "I'll have that teacher fired tomorrow." We don't do that individually. Those go through the process. Obviously, if you ask the superintendent to look into something, it's perfectly appropriate to follow up and say, "Hey, what happened with that student or that situation?" And if there are problems, you know, you can direct those. And the superintendent is the one person you directly employ. So he's the one that you can do, and you'll be conducting an annual evaluation of the superintendent. And we take that, a lot of time goes into that on the board, and that's an important part of your role as well. The last thing I'd mention is the conflict of interest. We have a separate conflict of interest policy, which I encourage you to review. All the policies, actually, you'll see every time you're up here, and they're also on the website, are available. I, as your attorney too, can certainly help interpret those. I bring the Public School Law book with me to all the meetings, so if you have legal questions, that's what I'm here for as your attorney. But if you believe you have a conflict, maybe we're approving a contract tonight for a contractor, and your brother owns the company. The main thing is to disclose that conflict. Let me know, or let your board chair know, and then we can say, "Is it a conflict?" If we're awarding a contract to a relative, then we can simply ask you not participate in that vote. So if you have an issue, and we try to identify if you've got a relative on the personnel list, you can abstain from voting on that person, so you're not voting to put your wife into a teaching position. But it's mainly a matter of disclosing it. Obviously, you know what those potential conflicts are. So if you disclose those, we can make sure that you're acting appropriately. But I welcome you all to the board, look forward to working with you as you go forward. And just at some point tonight, if everyone will sign the Code of Ethics, I keep those in a little folder here in case there's any issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Enriquez. Board members, if you haven't already done so, please sign your Code of Ethics and pass it on down, and we'll get those to Mark, and that'll be taken care of already. I too look forward to working with all you guys. I want you to know I do. And, you know, change is not always easy, but it's essential that we have change. And you notice we've got six men, and we've got Carolyn. But we're gonna do all right. Carolyn, you'll be all right. You in good hands.
I have no problem whatsoever.
You are in good hands.
There's a lot of dark suits.
I am really looking forward to this year.
Okay, all right. Board members, we're gonna move right along now. And I'm assuming that the new members have had their training in board docs, and they're up to speed on how to follow along with us and all that. So if you have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to let me know. And don't forget, when you speak, you know, turn your mic on, and when you finish, turn your mic off, so there won't be no feedback. Okay, now, let's move on to the report section of the agenda tonight. And we got Ms. Kelly Klutz. She'll actually be doing 6-1 and 6-2. So Kelly, when you get ready, we're ready for you.
Good evening. The QSCB report has some significant changes on it in the column, " requested budget amendments." But during the course of the day, we're gonna discuss budget amendments in Section 7.01, and also, we're gonna discuss some alternates that we want you to review in 7.05 for the Northwest GEM. And so, some of this will become clearer to you when we get to those points. So if you have questions at those times, we can discuss that then. For the most part, all of these projects are coming to a close. We have the Northwest GEM that is still incomplete, and you can tell to the far right of the column the percentage of complete, the projects are. So there's just a few of those projects that are not completed. At the end of the list, there's some post-prom projects, and there's some projects that are completed with other funds. If you'll just review that list and let me know if you have any questions. And again, we'll address those budget amendments later with the alternates for Northwest.
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board members, I don't know how long you've had a chance to look at this, but most of you have been attending our meetings for quite some time, and I can only assume that you've sort of been following this since we've been talking about it a lot. And so I would like to give each board member just a minute or two, you know, if you have comments, to bring those to light. If no comment, you just say no comment and move on. And I'm gonna start to my right. Mr. Shoemaker, if you have any comments, questions about this, I'd entertain your thoughts at this time.
No comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Ms. Carpenter?
No, none at this time. I'll wait till she brings the other stuff.
Okay, all right. And Mr. Keiger?
I'm fine.
Okay, good. Okay, Mr. Walters, you have any comments?
No comments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, sir, no comments.
Okay, thank you. How about Mr. Phillips?
I'll break the streak.
Okay, all right.
Just for my own clarification, the projects where you're removing money from the budget, you are not changing, or we are not changing, the scope of any of those projects. Is that correct? It's just we've been able to do them for less money than originally anticipated?
Is there a specific, I don't believe we've changed any scope of the projects. I'm wondering if there's a specific project that you're speaking of. Now, the postponed projects, we're not doing those at all. So I can't say that we're not changing scope on those projects, because we're not doing them at all. So I can't say that all inclusively.
No, I mean, it looks like, I mean, most of them are at 95, or I guess there's one that's at 97, 85 percent. So I think that they're...
The projects that we were doing, we were able to complete those projects, and those were dollars that were left after we completed those projects. But there were projects that we just did not do at all.
Right, I understand. But it looks like the projects that have been executed have almost universally been executed for less than the originally planned budget. And that's what's making the $238,940 available for the Northwest project, correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Okay, Ms. Klutz, you can carry on with the 7.2, I believe it is.
You want me to?
6.2, I'm sorry. I had to get out of that screen first.
Yeah, Michael, do it for me. Now, we're gonna talk about budget process, and this'll be the budget process that we'll use for the fiscal year 1314. And we just wanna start reviewing that process with you. So the, sorry. So the goal or intent, the purpose of bringing this information to you this year is, or today, is to evaluate our process and determine if adjustments need to be made for our budget process. And so there's two intents or two goals in mind in particular. One is, we always want to continue to improve our current process and evaluate that. And the other reason is that we want to evaluate our funding changes. We don't always have funding changes, but we certainly want to look at those to see if there are. So as we look at, as we look at those two items, and we're looking at continuous improvement, so we got some feedback from our principals. And those are the things on the left are items, we ask our principals, what are the items that should remain in our budget process that we had from last year? We feel like we had a really good budget process over the last two years as we tweaked those processes. And our principals, we had a really long list. We did delta plus and deltas. And the principals, after I reviewed this list, these are the things that stuck out four or five times each time. They said the budget process was inclusive. They were able to provide input. There was involvement, there was transparency, and there was communication involved in this budget process. And these were the things that they liked, and these were the things that should remain in the budget process. So on the flip side of that, we asked them, what were items that were not as beneficial to the process? And so these are the things that I saw repeatedly, and they said that they didn't feel like we needed to involve all staff. They valued input, but they didn't feel like all staff needed to be involved in the budget process. They said it was too time-consuming. They spent a lot of time on budget. They also said that they valued Trigo, the tool, but they didn't feel like they needed to use Trigo with staff, with all of their staff. That was too intense. And they also said that there was a lot of work for a flatline budget, and that there was little end result. So again, back to very time-consuming for the amount of work that they put in. So as I'm reviewing our budget process and trying to develop a new one, or...
Sign with Trigo.
I'm sorry. Trigo, I'm sorry. Trigo is a decision-making tool that we've used for the last two years to help us evaluate the things that are important to our system and prioritize things in our system for our budget process. Okay, sorry. You're gonna have to help remind us to do that.
I don't have to.
Oh, I'll have to get back with you on that one.
You ever really learn what it is?
Yeah. If anybody can help me out with that, I'd appreciate it. Okay, so now with the second thing, the second item that we're evaluating, our funding changes. And so this goes back to history. I just want to give you a little history. So 2011, 2012, we had a decrease in our funding, and so we developed our budget to cut $6.3 million from our budget. And we did that, and we developed our budget process to do that. And there were no expansion at all involved in that. So 2012, 2013, we developed our budget to have a flatline budget. And that's what I just talked about with our principal, said there was a lot of effort to remain flat. So we had no increase, we had no decrease. But if you did want something, if you wanted to increase something, you had to find something to cut so that we remained flat. So that's where we were this, it was last budget year, this current fiscal year. So 2012, 2013, 2014, and I just put a great question out there, because I don't have a crystal ball, and I can't predict the future. But, you know, we have to predict something, we have to have something to work with. So this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna, we all, we know that we have a continuing operational expenses that are gonna be identified and funded first. And I'm gonna say this a lot, continuing operating expenses. And so I'll just define what that is for you. And that's down at the bottom of your document. Continuing operational expenses are expenses in the previous year that will allow us to maintain our current level of operations, but they're gonna increase. So they're like, and we don't have any choice about that. So they're like, if the state says that they're gonna give teachers a pay increase, a state required pay increase, we also have to give local employees a state pay increase. Or if the retirement rate increases, the employer's matching, we have to do that too. So those are, we're gonna function at the same level, but we have increased costs, utility costs. It's just like fuel going up. When the, when that cost goes up, your expense goes up, you're not getting more of anything. You're just paying more for it. So that's continuing operational cost, or your expenses are going up, and you're just operating at the same level. That's what, and I'm gonna talk about that more and more. You're gonna hear that term. Okay. So this is what we have. You're either gonna have an expansion budget, or you're gonna have a continuation budget. And we're gonna, we're gonna be talking about these types of budgets. And these are the process flow that it's gonna go through. If it's, if we're talking about schools and system-wide, it's gonna start at the school improvement team, because the school said, "We don't wanna touch all level of the staff. We don't talk to all levels." So they're gonna pull their school improvement teams together. They're gonna look at that, then it's gonna come to a subcommittee level, and then it's gonna come to administrative teams. Administrative teams, I'll define those in the next slide for you. Then it's gonna come to a budget hearing. A budget hearing is where we get to present information to the budget committee and tell what we need and why, and why it's important. And so those have been valuable over the last two, three years for us in budget, in budget committee. So then we'll go to budget committee, and budget committee will make a recommendation to the board. And that's the structure that we'll use for budget, for expansion. And so the board is used to having a detailed technology budget, also a facilities, a detailed facilities budget, and a capital outlay. So that's why you see those labeled separately. Continuation budget is pretty much, we'll just need to pull that together administrative level, because if you're gonna have an increase in benefits or utilities, I just need to pull it together for you and tell you what it's gonna be and present it to you. Now, the committees and teams that we talked about, the budget committee, we'll need three board members as representatives to be on our budget committee, and we'll need our cabinet there. And we'd like to have some county representation there to get some buy-in from the county. We would like four principal representation. We'd like community representation, a teacher representation.
Excuse me, who's the cabinet?
The cabinet, okay. The cabinet is our administrative, yeah, is...
The U.S.
Yes, the, yes, yes, us. Yes, sir. And Dr. Shepherd's the leader. Yes, I'm sorry. And a teacher assistant representation and parent representation. So that would be the budget committee. And then our subcommittees, we would have our schools, every school would be a subcommittee. That's the way it's been in the past. Departments would be, create subcommittees. What I found last year was that we had a teacher assistant rep, and we had a teacher rep, and we had, we had maybe, I don't think we had a parent rep. But what I decided is that it would be really good if I went to the teacher assistant rep meeting and allowed the whole group to be a subcommittee. And we felt that that would be really good. So I would get all 39 of them to be a voice for us, so they would be a whole subcommittee. The administrative team, they're gonna be our, basically our workhorses. They're gonna do all the work for us and pull that together and present that for you, because there's a lot of work that goes into this. You heard the budget committee had said last year that there was a lot of work and a lot of time going into this, trying to spare the budget committee and the principals some of their time and get all that done for them. And so the administrative team's gonna do that for us. So that's the cabinet, the directors as needed, and the finance staff as needed. We're gonna pull that together and present that for us. Okay. So some extra information that you need to know. The board chair will need to select three members to serve on the budget committee. The budget committee will meet four times, and they're most likely gonna be four days. I'm gonna try to narrow that down as much as I can, but as much as the information that we need to go over, it's probably gonna take four days. The administrative team's gonna do a lot of the preparatory work for the budget team to minimize the meeting time. Subcommittees will meet as often as necessary to have recommendations for the board, the budget committee. And the committees will work through the budget data for expansion. Because when we talked about the continu- Because when we talked about the continuation, that's when I, I'll just pretty much tell you that we're gonna have retirement increases or salary increases. The committees won't need to work through that. Administer budget hearings during the budget committee meetings. In past years, that was a separate scheduled time. We won't need to do that. I'll put that inside the budget committee meetings. We'll prioritize our expansion using Trigo, again, that process of prioritization. And then we'll develop the proposed budget to present to the board as a recommendation. So there'll be a couple of assumptions for the continuing operations. So for us to continue, we're gonna assume that our daily average membership is going to increase at a similar rate than we have in the past. We're gonna assume that our growth funds will be used for growth in the areas allotted. For examples, so they'll give us teacher funds for growth. We'll, we'll use those for teachers. We'll get clerical and custodial funds. We'll use those for clerical, custodial, that type thing. Those are just growth funds. Continuing operational expenses are funded prior to expansion. That means that all of those necessary evils have to be funded before we can start talking about anything new. And the state normally funds salary and benefit increases if they're awarded by the state and we have to take care of the local. So if the state says there's a 2% pay increase for state employees, they'll take care of their portion. But we then have to make sure that we're taking care of the locally paid employees. And that's, that's not always a given from the local portion. Okay?
Kelly, can, can you just maybe for, for these guys, define and explain how there's some people that we pay and there's some people that the state pay and they're, you know, there's just different buckets of money that go to people that work here in the district?
Okay. Most of, and I can get you the percentages and charts and things, but most of our, our money is, you have state, federal, local dollars. Yeah, I've got one over here and three over here. So, so most of our, our funds are paid from state dollars. But there are a few, like our facility, all of our facilities and operations are locally paid employees. And so they're not, but we don't treat our employees different. You know, if you're a state-paid employee, you're, you get the same thing. We treat them all the same. So we figure out how to, to incorporate that into our budget regardless. And generally, the local government has matched the same thing as the state does and it hasn't been an issue. But we, we have to be aware of the funding source because the state's only gonna send down the money for the state-paid employees. Federal is, is different too in that they give you a, a flat allotment. They're not gonna send down the money to match it. They're just gonna give you a flat amount of money and tell you to figure it out. So it, every, every allotment of money is different, whether it's state, federal, local. Regardless, it's just every program is different. Nothing's simple.
But to summarize, all the employees are treated the same way regardless of the federal dollars or... They don't actually know which dollars are coming to them.
They don't know, nor do they care. But it's my problem. It's, it's my problem and your problem. So we have to figure it out. That's why I'm telling you.
Kelly, are you saying though that the state determines, say, a percentage increase? And that's the determinant, determining, determining factor? Then we find the money for the local employees or the federally funded employees? But that the state sets a percentage and that what, is what triggers the other dominoes, so to speak?
Yes. And, and local's been great. They, we usually go to the local and say, the state has said, like last year, for example, there's a 1.2% pay increase at the state level and we need for you to give us 1.2% for our locally paid employees. And they did. They amended their budget to allow the 1.2% for local employees. But it's not a guarantee, it's not a guarantee.
Really? Any local teaching positions or is it?
Yes, we have local teaching position. Okay. Okay. So, so those were continuations. So now, now we're talking about expansion. So if we get past the point where we can just continue to operate, then we're gonna talk about going beyond that. So the assumptions are, my first assumption, I've already said this one time, is that we're gonna fund the continuing operations first. And so the second is that committees are gonna be able to identify an expansion area up to the amount of the discretionary reduction. So you probably don't know what the, you may not know what the discretionary reduction is. So, so the discretionary reduction is an amount that the state told us over, over the last decade, as far as I know. It's probably not been quite that long. But so if we get a budget amount of $150 million at the state level, they tell us, cut, you, you cut $5 million and you tell us how you want to cut it, where you want to cut it, out of what pocket of money. And that way, they don't have to tell you, they don't have to decide whether it's teachers, teacher assistants, clerical, administrative, whatever. You on this board get to decide where to cut it. And that's been happening for quite some time. So that's the discretionary reduction. So, and our discretionary reduction has been nearly $8 million recently. So past year's been reduced nearly $1 million. So we're, we're closer to $7-ish million, something like that. So the statewide push this year is to eliminate the discretionary reduction completely by 100%. So that's what we want to, what we want to be our number one priority in budgeting is to reduce the discretionary reduction. So if that were to happen, we could, we could put that back into our operating budget and spend it how we wanted to. So we, we should be prepared for that. I, my guess would be that they would also tell us how we want, how they want us to spend it. But we'll be prepared for it if, if that happens. Okay? So expansion items that would be listed would need to be operating in nature. Salary supplies, technologies, technology. If funds are received, they would be operating again. They could not be capital because this, these are state funds. You cannot buy anything capital out of state funds. Again, operating in nature. And then of course, everything would need to align with our strategic plan. Okay? And so, and this is for your information, the budget committee meetings on the left side. So if you're gonna be one of my committee team members, you need to be aware of these dates. And then on the right, I've just aligned the board meetings that we're gonna be talking about budget so that you're aware of those. Okay? And I'll take other questions that you have.
Okay, board members. You've got the budget process from Ms. Klutz here. And for the last two years, we've done it differently. First year, we did Trigo. Second year, we did Trigo. It was, and it is very time consuming. And you notice though, a change that Ms. Klutz has made is gonna require four full days, whereas we did 10 or 12 half-days before. And some of them said it was too time consuming and this and that and all. But this is a four full good days, guys. It's not just come in and, and whatever. You know, I mean, it's a full day when we hear from the committees and we hear from the different departments and, and then, and all. But anyway, you've, you've got the report from Ms. Klutz on the budget process. Do we have any questions? And if you do, I'd like to start on Mr. Phillips' side. If you have any questions or comments, you can do that. And, and, and I'm trying to, I want you to understand this too. You know, for all of you presenters, you got to remember, we got four new board members here and they got a real steep learning curve. And so when it comes to normal day-to-day lingo for you guys, and some of us, it's been around for a while, it's not to them. So you're gonna have to try to be a little bit understanding on that. And, and then these meetings are gonna take us a little bit longer to start with till they sort of get up to speed and that kind of thing. But I think that they'll move rather quickly. But anyway, board members, if you, the only stupid question is the one you don't ask. And so remember that. And so if Mr. Phillips, you have any questions, I'd like to entertain your thoughts at this time.
No, I think I'll try to learn a little more before I ask questions on this. It's, but I, I, I appreciate you outlining what the process is and very happy to hear that the direction may be at least going up rather than asking us to find more ways to cut.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison?
Kelly, I wasn't ever prepared for any kind of speech tonight, but I made myself cards. And this is for me, this is for me, keep it brief. So I'll do my best to put this right in front of me and always remember to keep it brief. So I hope these are quick questions. The committee breakouts of the individuals who would attend the meetings. You mentioned a variety of staff, board members, individuals who would participate in accumulating all the information and the opinions. Are each of those individuals, such as the teachers' assistants reps, for example, do they each have kind of an equal vote or an equal say or equal ability to contribute their opinions? I'm, I'm asking if they're there, I hope that their desires and needs weigh in as much as a county commissioner's desires and needs and, and ours as well.
Yes. We, we don't, we don't take the committee meetings as votes as much. We consider everybody's opinion and we take that information back to the budget committee.
Okay.
And, and then we talk about that and consider that. And we can, then we take that into our proposal that we recommend to the board. But it, it's never just a straight vote.
Okay.
It's just information gathering.
Okay. And from the recent campaign and some interactions we had with individuals, or I certainly did, I'd like to stress that very explicitly clear communication probably is very crucial for each of those groups that would be involved in, in the process. Slide five, if I'm going in the right direction. At, following the flow of the chart here you have for us, would those be five individual votes that the board ultimately would take? Or would it all be kind of bundled together as a single vote? There would be a statewide process, a technology process, facilities process? How, how would the board finally review each of those components? Or would it all be bundled together for a final ultimate decision?
There's one final vote on the, on the, the budget. You can certainly, as we work through the, the budget process, if you look at the, the last slide and the, the dates on the right. So we're gonna, on March the 4th, we're gonna talk about technology. We're gonna talk about facilities. We're gonna talk about capital. So if you have concerns or issues and you want to make changes there on technology, you could, you could talk to us and tell us the changes that you wanna make and we can make those changes. So the idea is by the time, you see on, on Monday, April 8th, I say, we're gonna review all. So those are the things I would come back to you and I would say, Mr. Harrison, we made the change that you suggested, you know, and then by Monday, April the 15th, I would expect that we would all have come together in agreement. I would hope that we would all have come together in agreement and the board would be able to have one vote and adopt the proposed budget at that time.
Kind of an omnibus bundle of the whole thing. Slide eight, you mentioned that CCS average daily membership, ADM, is expected to increase at a similar rate as recent years. What benchmark rate is that or has that been or what approximate range is that?
I'm gonna give you a round number and Colleen might be able to give me a better one. So we're like 600, 6, 6 to 800.
New students a year?
A year, yeah.
Okay. System-wide?
Yeah, yes.
It's grown every year, so I would expect it to be on the high side of that production.
So approximately 800 is what we would ballpark it in the spring in anticipation of the September actual counting?
Right, but we'll monitor all of the enrollments very closely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for your comments. Mr. Walters?
Yeah, thank you very much for putting that together, the overview. I don't have much. Just on this budget committee, it says we, you explained how the teacher assistant representation was chosen. How do, you have community representation, you got parent representation. If I'm a community member and wanna be involved, how, how is that selected or how is that done?
Last year, last year, Dr. Shepherd helped us select Mr. Schumaker. So...
So it was one, one individual?
I'm sorry. We did have one individual, so we've not, we've not narrowed that down this year. Mr. Schumaker has made a suggestion already, but I'm not, haven't...
So we have a process in place on selecting those?
Yeah.
Have it for the principals, how do you select?
Principals, usually my HR department helps me with that.
The only other thing I had was, you hear in the news about a fiscal cliff coming. Does that throw everything out the window or is that?
Not so much. That's the federal fiscal cliff, not so much. I mean, it certainly can impact us here at the state level. But we, we've done a good job here locally preparing for what's going on here. And we, we don't know what's gonna happen. So, you know, we can just, you know, we have to wait and see. But I, I don't, I don't anticipate huge cuts coming into next year.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Mr. Kiger, you have your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, Kelly, I was curious on slide three, the continuous feedback.
Yes.
The, I'm surprised that on the downside or the negative side was Trigo with staff. Because I, I thought that was the sort of what we sort of wrapped our hands around that everybody thought was great and they got the impact and the feedback. So I'm a little surprised that, do you, I mean, and you may not know why it hit the list, but did you get any feedback on why that, that's on that side?
They felt like, they just wanted to brainstorm and, and talk to their staff and didn't wanna go through the whole process. They, they also didn't feel like they had the, the training that we had with Trigo to be able to go out and, and do the process.
So it's more of a, if we're able to more formally do it, it might've had a better result, I guess, it sounds like. Okay. Because that, I just remember I went to one. I obviously didn't participate. But I saw a nice cross-section of staff and people there that were able to give input. And I thought that was kind of where the rubber met the road as far as putting some of that together. So I'm, I'm just surprised that that's, that's on that unless, I mean, is there another, how? Does that mean we're not gonna use that at all?
With, no, no, no. Certainly we're gonna use it. But I don't, I don't think we should use it or the, the principals were telling me that they felt like they could get the information with other tools with their staff and not necessarily use the Trigo.
So it's just at that level?
At, at that level, yes. That's what they were telling me.
Okay. That, that's, that's, that makes sense. And maybe I should know this question, but on slide five, capital doesn't have a subcommittee that helps put that together?
It, it would be basically our administrative team. I mean, most of your capital is gonna fall in your facilities.
Right.
And so that's where you're gonna see all of that facility stuff come in. We're gonna have a little bit of transportation and we'll have a little bit of other things. But you're gonna see most of everything that you're concerned about falling in the facilities.
So you could take the facilities box and just scoot it over by a third?
But I didn't wanna leave it out because there are some other things.
I've got you. And one, I think this is, there may be another one. We talked last year about having county representation and it, I don't think it really panned out. I think we invited commissioners and I don't think we ever got one. But, and that's, not, I mean, I think they, just schedule-wise or whatever, I don't think that was on purpose. It just didn't really work the way we... Are we going back that route or are we trying to go with, with maybe Ms. Dubois and her staff or what? Okay.
Yeah. We're gonna do Mike Downs and Pam Dubois. We're gonna try to get them.
Gotcha. I think that's... Gotcha. I think that's, I think that's critical. And I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I think Blake is kind of on the same page I am. I think you were reading my mind over here. Great minds think alike. Because basically those were the questions that I had. I wanted to make sure as serving on the budget committee, a lot of those same questions, basically, really the county involvement. That was a key thing that we needed and the TRIGO training. Where I was coming from, I thought it would be wonderful training for our current new board because that is training that can not only be used for budget, but, you know, where what I found in the training that we took for the two or three days we took, it can really affect any kind of decision-making. And it was very useful. And that's why it was really surprising when I saw that on this.
We're definitely gonna use TRIGO in our budget process. It's just not at the school level or the staff level.
That's why it was really surprising when I saw that, when they said they didn't like it for their staff. Because it is a decision-making process and it can be used in any type of facet. And so that was kind of surprising to see it listed there. But the whole process, what I, what I see here, I think is really good. And I think time was, I mean, we used a lot of time and I can see where they're coming from. But, you know, it's made it a very easy process for us and I think it's made it easier for this board. You know, it's unusual to say, gee, it's made it a great process. But it was a lot of work, but the end result has been really great for us, making it a lot simpler. And when the end result for what we've done, and I appreciate what you've done to make it that way. And I think it looks great. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker?
Thank you, Kelly. I'm looking forward to another budget experience. I've done this twice and one of the things that I think, and this is just a summary as a community rep, having been involved with this for a couple of times. The budget committee offers a menu of items for us as a board to consider. It's, what they're trying to do is grind down the whole budgeting process so that we have something to consider. Everything is still on the table for us, so no matter what the budget committee decides on, we can overturn that. So as a board, we have the opportunity to do what we want with the budget. But they're trying to grind through the process, boil down the budget into something that's manageable for us to look at and offer suggestions for us to consider as we go through the budgeting. So it's, it's, the usefulness is that they've gone through a lot of the detail and removed some of the smoke and mirrors out of it, hopefully. And then we get to really consider some true decisions that staff, the teachers and all have raised up and that, you know, things to consider. So I felt it was very valuable. The TRIGO tool, I can understand why they were resistant to having it at the schools. I know they struggled with it because it did take a lot of time and time is something that our schools seem to have a little less of with all the other demands. But I think there's a lot of value in it and I'm glad they were continuing to involve them in the process because I think there's a lot to be gained with the teachers being involved and having an opportunity to input into it and to learn about how to find areas that they can eliminate costs in their processes. And I think that it's valuable for us. One thing about the fiscal cliff, we have money, you keep a certain amount of money in reserve, kinda, to help us, you know, in case we do have major issues with financing or with our financial money flow. What kind of reserve do we normally maintain? You keep a couple months' worth of reserve or a month's worth of reserve? I know we have something to protect us a little bit against interruptions in cash flow.
A general rule of thumb is just one month. We're a little healthier than that right now, but a general rule of thumb is one month.
So if something should happen in January with the federal government, we might, they might hold up some Title I funding for us. You would be able to still cover the gap with that and continue on because you have enough funding to operate the entire budget.
Well, again, federal funds are not our primary source. State funds are our primary source. And then local funds are secondary and federal funds are third. So the fiscal cliff is regarded in regards to the federal funds, it would not be the Title I. When we talked, when we were concerned about that, that number was about 500,000 for us. It's not a significant number for our budget. When we're looking at, my budget's $250 million. So those are certainly $500,000 would disable some things in our, in our budget, but it's not something that I'm gonna lose sleep over at night.
Right. Well, I just wanted to kind of give these guys a little bit more of a, we're a lot better off than what we think we are. And the fiscal cliff isn't gonna be a huge issue unless it drags on for months and months and months.
Right, right. I mean, my big programs are, like you said, it's Title I and EC and those are, those are my big federal programs that could, could really, the fiscal cliff could impact. And other than that, you know, you're really looking at state and local decisions that I'm more concerned about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker, for your comments. And the only thing that I want to add to this is, you know, as far as the county commissioners, I think they would have a much better understanding of what we go through, you know, to bring a budget, our budget to them if they were more involved with it. Because, you know, we attend the meetings and we find out when we're there that reports should have been sent or was sent, wasn't reviewed or wasn't found for whatever reason. Therefore, the information was never received by them individually. But if, just like for us, for our committees and liaison positions in the different departments in Gabarras County Schools, is to help be a spokesperson with that committee so that when it comes back to the board, we'll have firsthand account from that particular committee. And that's the same thing, you know, we're supposed to have a commissioner liaison. And what happens to that person, I don't know, but, you know, they do have a conflict, their meetings with our meetings sometimes. And I know that does create a problem because like they're meeting now while we're meeting, but then they're meeting on, where our business meeting is the second Monday night of the month, theirs is the third meeting, third Monday night of the month. But the only thing I can say that I can add is that I think that they were more involved in our process. It would make things easier when it got to them. So they would already know what we, all of the roads that we traveled to get where we are. But Kelly, I appreciate you bringing the report to us tonight and working on the budget process. And, you know, I look forward to, as the process starts in January, we'll look forward to seeing it progress and move on to the board sometime as it moves on. So thanks again for bringing that to us. And now we're gonna move on. And I see Mr. Wiki walked in just in the nick of time. And so, Mr. Wiki, are you gonna have Dave to come up with you and you'll do this presentation on the QSCB projects?
I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wiki. Floor is yours. Thank you.
Dave was willing to stand in for me, but as you just mentioned, things were worked out this evening, so I could be here. Thank you. In terms of, and the document I'm referring to, of course, is the milestone. It sort of looks like it's a blue heading called the Milestone Report. And I think the easiest way for me to describe this report is that it's nearly ended. We're slowly taking things off as we go. And when I say off, I mean, we're sort of completing them as we go. And the majority of the projects really are at that point, as you can see from the percentages of completion. The, there are really about half a dozen projects, four or five, I should say, that are still lingering or underway. The first one is about midway down in the first group of architectural projects under Concord High School. We are basically done with the dining room facility and that's completed and operation. What we're waiting on still is the furniture. We've ordered all the furniture and the last pieces of it will be delivered by mid-February. We, if you recall, the bidding of that work was such that we ended up with a number of different firms being selected to provide different pieces of furniture. And whether or not that would be something we would normally choose to do, it is a requirement of QSCB to do it that way. So Dave did have the wonderful experience of going through all the bids and working with the board to sort out who would get what portions of those bids. And so it is all on order and, like I say, it'll be coming in in sort of pieces with the last ones arriving mid-February. The next project that's underway is the gym addition, which we'll talk a little bit later about. We did bid that project. It is, it was, I should say, within budget for the base bid work. So we are in the process of awarding that contract to Holden Corporation out of Greensboro. We do have some alternate bids that we want to talk about later and we'll get into that in a minute. The next project, and by the way, excuse me, the gym addition, we have a pre-bid meeting next week and construction on that project should start in early January. The next project under construction is the Central Gabarras High School electrical vault upgrades. That project is moving along. The major part of, or a large portion of that project will be done over the holidays. We'll be replacing all the main transformer gear at that school. And of course, we want to have everything shut down or at least minimally shut down, minimally operational, excuse me, so that we don't have a lot of people affected when we make that change over. Then the next project is the various schools. We call it the breaker panels. It's really what technically is called an arc flash resolution. We want to make sure that the, all of the electrical panels in buildings are, they have the good tight connections, that their breakers are in good working order. And if they're not, then all of that gets replaced. It's part of this process. Another piece of that was that our staff were trained, excuse me, to do it themselves. And we also received a gear, our suits, if you will, to address those kinds of problems because arc flashing can be very dangerous if you're not properly clothed for it. And the last one on the active groups is the Jan Frees Middle School. We bid a portion of that work and completed it, but it came in way below budget. So we've taken the opportunity with DPIs and you all as a board, we were given the go-ahead to bid more replacement work. We've been doing the school sort of a wing at a time. With this project, if it comes in within budget, we will be able to replace the majority of the roof that needs to be replaced. And that's really all of the active projects that are, well, you know, still well in construction. The rest are, as I said, very near completion. If you turn to the next page or go down to the next page electronically, there's a group of projects named postponed projects to be reinstated. And those projects represent a group of projects that the board looked at and said, well, if we have funds available after the gymnasium project at Northwest is resolved and fully funded, then we would like staff to begin working on those. Many of those projects have been designed, but that's where they sort of were stopped during the postponement process. So once Northwest's funding is worked out and that's all resolved, we'll come back to you with kind of updates on bidding the remainder of those projects. There's another group of projects below, actually two groups below that, which are described as postponed projects. And for reasons that certainly we've talked about in the past, those projects will not be done. It's not our desire to do them. As, as things turned out, there was not a need to do, for example, the entrance canopy modifications at Northwest. That was an issue where we wanted to make sure that there was a secure entrance in the facility and we've done that using maintenance funds. The replacement chiller and controls at Beverly Hills and Mount Pleasant Middle School are both sort of hanging fire until we can get resolution on how we proceed with additions or replacements at those two schools. And the last two projects, the wireless work at Hickory Ridge High School and Mount Pleasant High School, were done with technology operating funds and those are completed. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wiki. If you would, for the benefit of our new members, could you tell them about the Northwest Gabarras practice fields? How, you know, because it's, you know, it's under the postponed projects that's gonna be reinstated. Could you let them know where we are? And I'd like to know where we are as an update, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. We, where, well, let me first start by saying what the project is. Is that we were going to create new, new practice fields for both, for the high school, the middle school, and even for the elementary school to be able to use. And in that effort, there's land adjacent to Bogar Elementary School, sort of in between the middle school and the high school grounds. So it's very accessible to all three schools. And we were gonna create basically a football soccer practice field there with a practice track. And there will be some outbuildings eventually. What we are attempting to do right now is convince the Army National Guard that this is a valid project for one of their teams on a summer camp program to help us with. The project in total, I believe, was over $600,000. We've reduced it down significantly from that cost. I don't have the dollars right in front of me. But with the help of the National Guard, if they do accept it as a project, we would, what we would do is have them do all the underground stormwater piping and the rough grading of the project. And we would come back and seed it and at least get the field usable as a practice field. Eventually, we will add to it over time bathroom facilities and concession stand if that's something the board wants to do in the future. That was certainly the plan as it was originally thought of, but it remains to be seen how far you all would like to pursue that. We hope to at least get the fields playable within the next year.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wiki, I believe that it was about 115,000 or 125,000 would be the school portion, Gabarras County Schools.
Yes, sir.
You know, when you look at a 600,000-plus project and they're gonna supply the equipment, the manpower, and all we've got to do is put them up for about two weeks and buy the diesel fuel. And, you know, for all of that, I think that's a pretty good deal in anybody's eyes. I mean, I think so. And so that's one of those projects. But I appreciate your update on it, letting the board members know. And I'd like to give the board members each an opportunity, Mr. Wiki, to ask you a question that they may have. You know, reference the, this particular list that you've given us here. And I'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side this time, if you have any questions or comments about it. If none, just we'll just move on.
I just have a couple. Lynn, on the, on the power upgrade of the panels and the training that goes with it, what's the voltage in these panels that we're doing the upgrades to?
The majority of them are, they typically don't see 220 volts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're small. There are some larger ones than that. It depends on how it stepped down from the utility. I think they, and that's, I don't actually have an answer. I believe we've probably got some 480 panels in there that get worked on. I don't know who does that as compared to what this group is doing. I will confirm that, though.
Well, the corollary to that would be as far as high voltage and how we, how we maintain our training on people who, I don't know if you have qualifications for high voltage?
We do, yes.
And how you maintain that qualification. But, you know, when I see this arc flash, I know we went through a whole process of doing this and labeling the panels and all. And it's quite a process once you get them all outfitted with their appropriate gear and everything.
Right. It is. You're correct. And, you know, I think that there are certainly levels of expertise. We usually, like I say, train people to do what is reasonable in the schools and routine versus something like, you know, if you're doing anything much above 480, that's certainly something we're gonna call the utility on for.
Okay. The other question I had, you said on the entrance canopy to Northwest that you had used maintenance funds for that. Was that a high priority item that would require you to use those maintenance funds?
It was.
And how did you establish that as a priority item?
It was. What happened was we had four people come into the school unchallenged from other schools in the area and with the sole purpose of doing some, some bad things. And so luckily, staff found them in the school, removed them from the school and turned them over to the authorities. But it was that action, or that activity and incident that caused the school to become very concerned. And at that time, we routinely have been upgrading all the schools to have what we consider, what I'll call an airlock or a secure vestibule system. And we do so many of them per year as our funds allow. And it happened that with that event taking place, we just decided to move that project up ahead of some others and we did that one. But that's an ongoing project whenever we have available funds.
So it's not actually, when you say entrance canopy, it's actually setting an entrance vestibule aside so that they can only be isolated and go to the office and that's the only area?
Right. There are actually two parts of that. There was that portion of it. And then there was a thought, they are, like many schools, having problems with staggering amounts of birds roosting in the canopy. having problems with staggering amounts of birds roosting in the canopy. And so, we need to address that. We've done a number of different things. We're still looking at other solutions. This project considered the idea of tearing off that canopy and coming up with something else. It was just that the school really felt the secure vestibule was the most important thing of that, and the rest of the funds, they felt, was reasonable to have moved to the gym because of that being their highest priority.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions?
No, you answered mine. Mine was only on the equipment in Concord when those tables were going to be delivered. And is the majority of it already delivered, or is it going to be?
No. Most of it will be coming in late December and then January. That, the bulk of that will be coming in at that time.
And then the very last in February?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it latter part of February, or do you know?
No, I believe, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, it's sort of early to mid, mid-February is when they...
It's actually mid-January.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You should just throw something out.
Mid-January? Mid-January, good. That's good, because I had somebody ask me about it, so mid-January.
Yes, ma'am. I stand corrected.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger.
Well, this really is scary, because that's the question I was going to ask. And, and so, anyway, you just answered my question. We're not going to wait till, I mean, we're going to, when it comes in, we're going to install. That just happens to be, that's the end date for the final pick.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Mr. Walters.
Now, the electrical panels, that's an OSHA requirement, too, is it not?
It is, sir. Yes, yes.
And then you used an acronym on the Jan Frees, Frees Middle School about DPI. What does that mean?
I'm sorry, Department of Public Instruction.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. That's...
That's all I have.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. And let me interject for whatever's worth. I think that we've got a list somewhere. Miss Minnott sent us a list. And Ms. Monroe, I don't know whether you have that or not, of acronyms. We might want to make sure that we get this list to the board members. I'll search my archives.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I recall Mr. Kirk sending us some kind of glossary. I'm not sure if that was contained in it.
I think I did see something somewhere. We need to make sure all the board members get it, and that'll be your homework between now and next week, you know, learn all them acronyms. Okay, Mr. Harrison, you can have your comment.
Yes, Dad.
Okay, Mr. Harrison, got your comments.
Again, Mr. Wickie, thank you for all your great work. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
And all of you. If I ever fail to say it, remind me, and I'll certainly say that you all do great, great work. You do. Keep it simple for David. I'm referencing, say, a postponed project that's going to be reinstated, and any of them, you know, can be your example. Coltrane Web Kitchen Hood Replacement is purely an example that's going to be reinstated. Your chart here is saying that it's 5% done, or 5% planned. You know, it's, it's at that phase of a project. The, the cost of a project that is being reinstated, has that already been funded, in this case, I presume, by the county?
Well, these are federal funds that flow through the county.
For this purpose?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in the, and I thought these were capital, or in effect, brick and mortar types of, of costs. Why, why are these federal funds?
They're federal stimulus monies, is what.
Okay. So there's not much more of that left?
No. That's correct. Matter of fact...
So these funds are allocated, they're in our accounts, they need to be spent these ways, and then they are not replenishable, or, or, once it's gone, it's gone?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Sir.
That's probably an answer to my question.
Okay.
Close enough.
Yeah, the, the funds were allocated and bonds were sold probably October of 2010, I believe. 14, yes. They had to be spent by April 2014. And we're on track to, you know, get, get it done well ahead of that, that timeframe.
And, and will deplete that allotment or that bucket of money for those purposes by that time?
Yes, sir. That, that is our intention. If there is any residue funds left over, we will find a project, we'll have to submit it and go through approval project from, with the Department of Public Instruction. They are the federal agent, if you will.
Yes.
For the funds. And, and we would have to seek their approval, but it would be no different than what we did with the original projects. And if it's, and, and they will try and help us in any way possible. They've been very good to work with, so.
My original question was going to be about county funds, but as far as this chart is concerned, or these items on this list, are there any construction items that are county-funded here?
No.
If not, then we'll, I'll say that question for another day.
Okay. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And I can also add, you know, just for you guys' benefit, and you'll notice I'll be doing a lot of this in the next couple of months, and I'm sure the staff will as well. And then originally, Mr. Harrison, there was, I believe, about a little over $11 million.
Yes, sir.
That was what we got in federal stimulus funds, and there was a total of somewhere about 33, 34 projects. And actually, this came in during my two-year absence. So I came in, you know, on the beginning of most of these projects, but it had already been worked out. So you're looking at probably, this is probably the, going into the third year of working with these QSCB, which is Qualified School Construction Bonds, okay? And I know you've heard that acronym, and I'm sure you probably wondered what it was, but it's the Qualified School Construction Bonds. And be honest with you, these 33 projects, in my opinion, has been as lingering and more difficult as it would be to build a high school. And I think the outgoing board members, if they were here, they would agree with that, and I'm sure Mr. Kiger and Ms. Carpenter will as well, because when you're dealing with multiple schools, multiple projects, and all the different departments, and OSHA, and DPI, and all of these different people that come into play, it's long drawn out. And then, when we get to the point we are now, where that some of the projects have been completed, and there's excess funds there, those funds will be designated, in this case, right now, to get the Northwest Gym finished, with the auxiliary, I mean, the alternates and all of that. And then, after that is done, then we're going to go back to this postponed list and try to reprioritize that with what funds we have available. And we do expect there'll be some funds available, I believe, after we get through with Northwest, but I just wanted to better explain that, so I hope that helps some. Mr. Phillips, do you have any questions? Oh, yes, Dr. Shepherd wants to say something as well.
I want to address the federal, state, and local part of that question. These are bonds that are made available to us through the federal government. They are low-interest bonds, or zero interest in some cases. They will have to be repaid, and they will be repaid with county dollars, and that's why Mr. Wickie is often at those meetings, at the county commissioners' meetings, making reports on how we're spending this. It does require, if things change, it does require local board approval, it requires state approval, and our commissioners have also had a large say in how this money is shifted from account to account. So it has been a great deal of work. We're very appreciative of the fact that our county took advantage of the federal bonds made available to us, and we are, but it's a, it's a joint process through local and federal.
Well, my original question was going to be, how is the county apprised of the status of projects that are being reinstated? And if they are on, in effect, the hook for the, the bond and the repayment of the bond, is the county informed on a, on a periodic basis that a project is being reinstated, and those funds will be used, and therefore, the county can adjust its books to, in, in a timely fashion?
Yes.
Each week or something, each couple times a month or something? So the county is aware of the expenses that we are incurring that they will pay?
Right now, the county has asked for a monthly update, and that's what we provide them. You know, certainly there are project issues that come up. We communicate with staff all the time about the projects, but as a formal report, I report to them once a month, along with Kelly. And, and we, we give them both, both the financial side, as well as the project status, construction status and whatnot, each month.
Well, the good news is I don't have to ask that question again in the future, so now I should know that answer, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we don't, we make, we don't make certain, excuse me, we can't make certain decisions without their approval. So we can't reinstate a certain project, because we can't move the money, sorry. We can't move the money into that project without their approval, so we're asking you to approve. It's not getting any better, is it? Can you do it?
Yes. Well, you can talk about Northwest.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. In the case of, for example, Northwest, where we will be asking for funds for alternate, alternate bids on that project, to accomplish that, we'll need to move funds from other, some of the postponed projects, some of the existing projects that have been completed and have funds available in them. We're, through Kelly's assistance, we're moving all those funds, recommending the movement of those funds to the Northwest project. We've actually, we sort of postponed that discussion with the county this evening because of the overlap of, of meetings. And then we'll talk about it with you folks. If you agree that we should go forward on that basis, Kelly and I will present that at the next county meeting, which is the week after your business meeting. But there tends to be a lot of, there is, especially, you know, you try to forewarn people, as you get done with this many projects, there's lots of shuffling of funds, that there are, there are monies falling out of existing projects that have been completed, and there's little pockets of money. And that's, you'll see the list when you get to this project this evening of all of the multiple projects that were closing out, in effect. And, and so that's, that's the way we will accomplish the one project, and the way we'll accomplish the other postponed projects.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. David, you good now? Okay. Mr. Wickie, thank you. And now, Mr. Phillips, your short term.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations to you and your staff for bringing so many of these projects in under budget and making money available so that we can do some of these others. I think that that needs to be, you deserve congratulations and commendation for that, and you seem to be able to consistently do it, so it's not a fluke.
Thank you.
So, I have a general question about the, the structure of these contracts, for instance, the delivery of the furniture to, for the, for Concord High School, or replacing the transformers. Is there, do you typically put a penalty in the contracts if the supplier cannot deliver by a certain date?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Okay.
You know, and, and I will admit that they have to, we sort of want to make certain that it's something that they controlled and they chose not to do, or, you know, through negligence, or, or just because they didn't feel like performing. Failure to perform is something that we look at very carefully. If they honestly had a delivery problem on that side that they couldn't control, whatever, weather conditions, you know, we're, we, we work with the board to decide what makes sense. We certainly work with our attorney staff to decide whether or not to pursue damages. But if, in the case of, of these projects, if there were damages, you know, reasonable damages to be pursued, we will do that.
All right.
And that's true of these, as well as any projects.
So it's a standard thing in your, your budget? My second question is, on the, the projects, postponed projects to be reinstated, you say, in the, listed in the order of priority, when was that priority established and by whom?
It was established by this board about three months ago, possibly four. I mean, we can check the meeting minutes for sure, but it, you know, it was presented to the board, and we, we talked about those things, and, you know, we came up with a, we came up with a recommendation. I have a subcommittee of the board that I report to. We, we talked about it with the subcommittee members, which include two board members, and then we brought it to the board for full approval.
Okay. Because there, there were, I believe, three projects that were approved by the county last month, basically replacing of two tennis courts and a field house, and those seem to have jumped ahead of the, the ones that were on this postponed list. Is that right?
That's a different funding source, sir. These projects are part of the QSCB process. We can't, I mean, we could choose to use other monies, but these monies aren't placed to do these projects. The projects that I believe you're referring to were the projects that were, at least we're told were funded by the county through, just lost the term, fund balance, thank you. Lost the term. Fund balance that the county experienced. So our, our district, as well as Rowan County, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, as well as Kanepul City Schools, also receive funds from that same fund balance. So it's, it's a different group of funding for different projects. And it, again, it was a recommendation that we made to the board, and the board reviewed before presenting it to the county.
Okay. Well, just, it, it just appears to me that we seem to select these projects on a little bit of an ad hoc basis, and the priorities seem to change quite quickly, and I'd like to get a better understanding of exactly how we're going to solve this, what is it, $170 million of backlog? And I don't think we're going to do it by, by just haphazardly piecemealing funding a few things here and there.
Now, if I might, sir, just so you understand, all of those projects were listed in that 170-plus million-dollar request. Some of them bubbled up because of recognized code deficiencies that had to be addressed. Conditions in the tennis courts, of course, worsened in time. None of them were brought into a process, brought into the process not having been identified previously. They were all in the list.
Okay. My final question is about Northwest Practice Field. It's my understanding that before Boger was built, they actually had a practice field, and that this will essentially be a makeup for the, what they lost? Is that true?
That I don't know, sir. It's before I, my time, but I can, I can find an answer for you certainly, and, and let you know. I, I know we, when Boger was built, there were drawings in place that referenced development of these fields, but there was not sufficient funds in that project to do that work, so that was put on hold at that time. Before that, I, I don't know.
Mr. Wickie, I can address some of that for you, Mr. Phillips, because I was on the board back then, and that was for Mr. Wickie King. And we actually bought that piece of ground there for the Boger School from the Boys Club, Boy Scouts of America. We bought it from them, and there was not sufficient funds at that time, and nor have they been, even up until now, to complete that. It's just been a vacant piece of land. It's a triangle up there. If you go up there, you may have seen it, it's just a little triangle, you know, that is, has just been there, and it hasn't been in a usable state since the school was built. And, and, Mr. Wickie, now, you know, we've talked about this, it's listed as the Northwest Practice Field, when actually, it's the Boger, but all three schools can use it, because it's on the Boger property, on the Boger deed, whenever that was all funded. But there just haven't been sufficient funding, and, and not only that, when you got three schools in that close of proximity, you never have enough practice fields. And truthfully, I don't believe we would even be able to do this project now if the Army National Guard hadn't said, "Well, let us look at it." And so, it'd still just be laying there, because the funds just haven't been available. I hope that helps you a little bit.
No, that's good, and I certainly applaud your creativity in finding alternate means to get the project done. It's, it's, at times, the, the budget is tight, I know, and, and anything we can do to, to come up with these kind of solutions, again, you, you should be applauded for that. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And that, that there, again, goes to Mr. Wickie. That, I think that was some of his doings there, you know, somebody he knew, somebody knew somebody. A lot of times, that's, that's a good way, you know, to get help when you need it.
Exactly.
Okay, well, Mr. Wickie, any other questions? Ms. Carpenter?
I'm, I'm getting, I'm beeping. Let me get back here. Mr. Chairman, I know that we did it a, a year or so ago, and hopefully, with our new members, we can do it. Again, take our bus drive, a bus trip, and maybe take them on the tour of the schools as Mr. Phillips mentioned, you know, priority-wise. I know we took it of a lot of our older schools to see where we are, so hopefully, maybe after the first of the year, maybe we can, take us another bus ride and, and see some of our schools, the conditions they're in, so we can set, you know, look at our priority list, where we are, and maybe our new boards wouldn't like to, you know, change some priorities or do things like that. So hopefully, maybe we can do this later on in the year, maybe after our retreat or something.
And Ms. Carpenter, she was very instrumental in showing us about the bathrooms, you know. You remember all that, you know? We was going through a, not really a conflict, but, you know, where do you put the bathrooms, on which end, whatever. And, but anyway, you know, we'll pick the coldest day to do that sometime, maybe March. But it was a good tour. We'd take a Saturday morning, mid-afternoon, and we'd go around some of the schools and look at the different needs. And maybe in the meantime, we can convince one of our commissioners to ride with us as well because it's going to be a big job convincing them that we need to get busy on that $170-some-million-dollar project because we're never going to get anything done till we start. And we have started. We've met with them, and they're aware of it. But the big issue is, is funding. And I'm hoping that we're going to continue to work with them and try to devise ways to come up with additional funding some way and that will help us move forward on these projects here. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, then, Mr. Wickie, I appreciate you bringing your report to us. I'm glad you got back here, and it looks like you're done for this evening. So, thank you so much. Okay, board members, if you'll turn your attention now to seven point, well, actually, it's the discussion items for consideration at the December the 10th, 2012 business meeting. And I wanted to explain to you, these, we've got four or five items here. I think it's five items. Now, these particular items here are, when we get through with our discussions tonight, they will either go to the action agenda, which means they require more discussion on the 10th before we vote on these particular items here. And if we discuss it enough tonight that you're satisfied with the outcome of what we got, then we'll put it on the consent agenda. And the consent agenda will be all combined items voted in one vote if we get consensus on that tonight. And I'll ask you to give me your consent, or if you want it to go to consent agenda or the action agenda. Normally, the majority of the items go straight to the consent agenda. However, they are, sometimes that items come up that we need to ask staff to provide different information to us that we don't have so that we'll have adequate information to make the decision on the 10th. And then we'll bring it back and discuss it as an action item. Okay, is everybody clear on how that works? If you have any questions, you need to ask me because we're going to move on with Ms. Clutz on her first item here. Everybody good?
And it only, if any one member wants it on the action item, then it goes on action. So you don't vote on it. The idea is, if it's a consent, everybody agrees, it gets moved on. So if you have a concern or you want to vote on it at the next meeting, you can simply say, "I'd like that on the action agenda," and then it can go to the action. So any board member can move it over.
Just one clarification. So for instance, this first grouping, there are four different amendments. If we just have a question on one, does that mean that all four get moved to the action item?
Well, I think, the way we've done it in the past, let me get over to that. I didn't get down because they're listed individually. You see, well, she's only got budget amendments one time as an attachment. And Ms. Clutz, I'm not sure, we wouldn't want to hold up all of the budget amendments just for one of the particular funds, whether it be the state, local, or federal. I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. And we can delay the whole vote, put it on the action agenda if there is questions. It'd probably be simpler to do that. It would be simpler just to do it that way if you have a particular question. And keep in mind, you know, that a lot of work has gone into this already and on all of these items. And they're surely available for tweaking by each of us and bringing our thoughts to the table of how we want it or how it should be. But normally, though, we'll just move right along, and we'll just see how it goes. And then as we get through with each item, we'll decide whether it's action or consent after each item. Okay? So Ms. Clutz, if you'll go ahead with the budget amendments.
Okay, I'll start with the state budget amendment number four. And hopefully, I'll make, it's not looking good. The first one is for a charter school adjustment. The state basically does a projection, and then they'll adjust for charter schools after the first month ADM. So basically, they took too much from our allotment. And then after they looked at our ADM after the first month, they gave us more money back, which is a good thing. So the second item on that budget amendment is where we specifically request money for EC children. And we, so we make a request to DPI, and we say, "We need money for this specific child for equipment or salaries or supplies." And that's what you're looking at, the $18,000, where we requested money and we received it. So that, we have to spend it exactly how we requested it. The third one is essentially the same thing, where we ask for 3D device allocation, and we receive that money. The next item is where, when we're doing our budget and we're planning, I make sure that I cover all of my salaries first, and then...
Ms. Clutz, could you also, when you, keeping in mind these four new guys, could you initially explain increase and decrease for some of those that may not know? When they look at the increases, money that's coming into the school system, and decreases, money that's going out of the school system, okay?
Okay, yeah. So with my former board members, as long as there was money on the left-hand side as an increase, they never were concerned. They would say, "approved consent." They never had any questions, no questions, we were good. If it was money, the net at the end of the day was a negative and it was decrease, they might have had some questions for me, so...
Kelly, we can be trained.
You can be trained, good, okay. So the only decrease that you see there is a small $400, and it's for, when I did my projections on, the money that comes to us from the state is very specific, and that's just a small little interim thing. And we were, I did my projection, and I was off $400. We're very specific here in schools, so that's what that was. Are there any questions on the state budget amendment? No? Okay. Okay, I'll go on to local. So the local budget amendment is essentially, the only very detailed, specific budget amendments that we give you are facilities and operations, and we do a project budget. And so when I do the projects and the budgets, the facilities budget, you'll see a whole list of projects. And so this project, we had roof projects, and there was just a budget figure that was inaccurate when we brought it to the board. So what we're bringing to you is to get our budget figures back in line. We bid these projects. We're able to do both of these projects within the original scope of the project. And we just have to get our budget figures in line. But we're able to do both of these, both of these roofs and both of these schools within the confines of the dollars that we have. Are there questions on this budget amendment? Okay, I'm going to go on to federal. So if you look at the bottom of that, the bottom, we're increasing our federal dollars, $409,000. So at this point, you should be saying, "Yay." And everything's good. So basically, we have some grants that we're specifically requesting for specific needs, EC children and a literacy continuum grant. A lot of our federal grants are things that we specifically ask for, and we need to spend them for a specific reason. The second one, you'll see, we've noted Concord Middle and Concord High. And when raised to the top, we're reclassing Title I funds. And then we have down near at the bottom, some IDEAs, EC, Exceptional Children Demonstration Class. And all of these are very specific in nature in what we need to spend those on. Basically, as aligned with the grant that we wrote. Questions on that? Okay, I'm going to move on to our capital. This document is the one we've been talking about a lot with Mr. Wickie. The top amendment is where we prioritize the postponed list. And so as we reinstated those projects, these are the dollars, the movement of dollars that it'll take to reinstate those projects. And then the next amendment is the budget amendment that we will have to do to get the alternates for the Northwest High to be able to afford those. And so we're taking all of the money that he saved in the other projects, the little pieces of the projects. And those would have to be moved out somewhere anyway. And we're putting it into that gymnasium project, and we're able to take those alternates for that. So that's that budget amendment. So I'll take questions, any questions that you have?
I have one.
Okay.
When you're listing the increases and decreases, and especially in this one because it's so busy, the right-hand column on the second one, as example, you're taking the reclass of the QSCB funds to allow the, this little booger's got in my way here. To allow Northwest High School Gymnasium. The 238-940 is offset by the decreases on the other side. So that all adds up, and so it's a net zero.
It is, yes, it is.
And so when I see, like, in the first one, reclass to QSCB, those are, end up being net zero?
They do. And the way you can prove that is go down, the bottom, it says, "The amount of increase above amendment at net zero there." There was no, the total amendment did not change, not increase or decrease. It was a total net zero.
Okay, is there, are there occasions when, that there is no net zero? And how would you, do you bring a subtotal down to the bottom of that specific amendment?
Let's go back to the amendment before that. Look at the amendment before that. There's $409,000 there. So if I'm giving you money, if I'm increasing the budget, there's going to be a number there. If I'm decreasing the budget, there's going to be a number there. So if that number's positive, then you say, "Consent, sir," if you say that.
Right, but on a busier document, I just wondered if you would, if, say, this ended up in reclassing the funds, instead of it being a net zero, ended up with being something negative out of that particular budget, would you have carried, would you have created one more line to say, "A subtotal of that particular amendment ended up being a negative impact to that or a positive impact?"
If it would have been negative, I would have told you why. I mean, there could have been, there could have been a situation, well, not with QSCB funds, but with construction funds, so normal COPS funds or bond funds or something like that. So there will be a time, maybe when you're on this board, that I would have had a negative number there. And I would have said, "We've completed this school, and we're returning funds to the county. And that's a negative number, and we're going to give them $100,000 back because we completed the project and we're done."
Yeah, for that specific amendment.
Is this a standard form, or is this a standard government form? It's not our form?
Oh, it's, no, it's not.
Is it our form?
It's our form.
So we can add a subtotal if we'd like to?
Subtitle for what?
Well, let's just say, if you just take your first, and I hate to get tied up in the detail, but I just want to understand, if we have something very busy, and this one is, you know, we've got a lot of lines in it, a lot of numbers. So the reclass of QSCB funds for restated projects, if the left side of the line didn't add up to the right side of the line, and there was actually a delta between the two, would you record that delta in that amendment so we would see that? Or would you just carry it down to the very bottom and add it all together that way? You see, do you understand what I'm trying to say? I mean, not that, you know, I understand this because these ended up net zeros, so...
Yeah, they're in the, they're in this number down here, this 409. So there could be a negative number. Okay, go back up here, in the first one. So this negative 400 is in with this, and all these positives.
Right, I understand that. But go down to, let's just go down to QSCB, the last one.
Okay.
And you go to your first budget amendment, and you have, what, five, nine lines' worth of information? Some of them are increases, some of them are decreases. If that budget amendment, those two sides didn't actually add up to net zero, would you have told us what the total was, the delta, whatever that might have been? The difference?
Yeah, not normally, but I mean, I can.
It'd just be, it'd be easier to track than to go all the way to the bottom because you see, as you keep going down this document, you don't have to do it unless there is a, if it's a net zero, then it would be understood only if there's a difference. What I think that would be helpful for us, to follow it as you go through this, like this one, because it's so busy.
I don't normally put my reclasses and my adds or subtracts in the same amendments, I mean, in the same subsections.
Oh, okay.
So that would...
So most time, when you have a subsection like this, it would be a net zero of some sort?
Yeah, it would either be a reclass that hits zero, and then if I'm going to take it away, I would have it separate.
Okay.
That's generally the way that, I don't generally do what you're saying.
Okay.
For clarity.
All right. I'll wait till the example comes up.
Okay.
Ms. Carpenter, you have a comment?
All right, mine may be simple. Basically, you're telling me what I've got right now to use for what's coming up for the extras, for the gymnasium, which we've approved, the basic bid for the gymnasium for Northwest. You're basically telling me for those, for the extras for there would be $238,940?
No, the alternates are a little bit less than that. There's about a $20,000 contingency in there.
But I mean, but that's what I've got available right now. As if this budget amendment was approved. That's what I'm, that's what you're telling me with all the adds and subtracts, that is the amount that I would have available left in the QSCBs right now with what we've had taken away and everything. That is the amount that I would have available to me to use. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's...
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Phillips?
I do. Shouldn't we discuss the bid alternates in 705 before we vote on?
Yeah, that's another item.
But if we approve this, aren't we essentially saying we're doing this?
No, no, nothing's been, this is only the discussion here. But, see, we're going to decide whether, now, if we get to the other item. I see what you're saying, and we don't approve that, then they're going to have to come back with something else. And so, you know, this may have to, for all formality purposes, this may need to go to the action agenda till we find out if we're going to give a consent on the alternates, which we'll be looking at here just in a little bit, so...
We won't vote till next Monday.
Yeah.
So this is all just discussion. And Mr. Chairman, I had one other comment I wanted to make is, or just to make sure that you guys understood and the viewing audience and the public as well. All of these dollar amounts are leftover monies from completed projects that we've already done. And Jeff, you are 100% right to applaud Mr. Wickie because they have done a terrific job. It hasn't been 100%. There've been a couple that we had to move to supplement, but it's been, it's been pretty good considering when it was budgeted, how many years out, and how long we had to take. But I guess, just to, the only one that I know of that was just a, that we just completely didn't do was the chiller at Mount Pleasant Middle. Is that correct? That was just a zero from the get-go that we didn't do. And all of the other items are leftover that we're just capturing. Is that correct?
We didn't do Beverly Hills Chiller.
Okay, Beverly Hills, okay.
And the Northwest entrance canopy.
Well, right, okay. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that these are leftover funds from completed projects.
Okay, board members, any other comments? Mr. Harrison, you have your mic up. You ready?
I'm trying to ask an intelligent question, but I'm not sure if it's going to come out that way. To Mr. Phillips's point, Mr. Chair, you talked about alternative...
Alternates.
Alternates.
Alternates, right. Those are items that, and I think, let me see, I'm not, well, I got to, hang on just a minute.
And I guess my question is, should, at least for future reference, maybe not in this case, should we consider alternates first and then this type of list of matters?
Well, that's why I was recommended that we may have to just move it to the action agenda until we find out, you know, which 7.5 is where we'll be talking about the alternates. And we're on 7.1 now, so that's 7.5 down the agenda.
Okay. But you're saying 7.5 could have an impact upon our discussion of 7.1?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it could.
Some suggesting in future situations such as this, some discussions should be queued up prior to other discussions.
And that's a good possibility, but, you know, these items, see, you got, this is your first night being with us, and see, we've been working on this for about two years now. So that's the advantage that we have that you guys don't have. And so more than likely, you know, it will more than likely be approved because we've got to get the project finished. And if we don't approve the alternates, then that means we're going to have to go back and look at the excess funds here and reprioritize, I'm assuming. And that will be Mr. Wickie's job to finish that up. But I'm hoping, though, that we can just move forward with this and, you know, we won't have any issues. Dr. Shepherd?
I think what I'm hearing would remedy the problem is if, on the order of agenda from now on, or at least as we're going through this process, if we list budget amendments last, the last action item, then all the other actions you've taken, then we would make decisions about money at that point, and that would remedy the problem, I think. Okay? We can do that.
I think that's exactly what, all of that to say that, you know. So, I mean, and it's no problem. And, you know, it's just like, it's just tradition. It's just the way we've always done it. And that's a good change. I have no problem with it. Are there any other discussion on this? All right, so what we'll do then is we'll just wait till after, matter of fact, we can come back to this item after we've done, we've done discussed it. We can come back to it after we've done the other.
Mr. Chairman, let's just go ahead and put it on action, and then we'll just move on for the rest of the agenda.
And move it down to the bottom.
But we don't have a reason for that at this point, do we?
What? Well, we...
We haven't even, yeah, but we haven't discussed why we're changing it yet.
We may have to. Why not?
Well... Well, okay, it just opened up.
It doesn't necessarily need to go to the bottom. It just doesn't need to go on consent. We'll just move it to action, and then we'll just continue on with the next item on the agenda.
I think you misunderstood what I was saying. And what I was saying, and we'll do it the way the board wants to do it, but I'm just trying to make it easier for us on the 10th, you know, beating the same hammer over and over. And when we can do it tonight, after we, instead of making the decision on 7.1 at this time, instead of making the decision, consent or action, let's discuss when we get to that item, the items that's going to affect the budget. And then at that time, if we get the approval, now, if we get action, if we go to the action on 7.5, then it's automatic action on 7.1. Do you agree?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. But what I'm saying, though, now, if we get consent on 7.5, then there's no need to carry the 7.1 to action. It needs to go to consent as well. Okay?
Okay.
Does that make, does that make more sense?
That's fine.
Okay. Sometimes I've got to go around Canada to get to Florida, you know. I hope we got it straight. So, okay, so Ms. Clutz, we're going to wait until after 7.5 before we decide on 7.1. Okay? All right, now, let's move on. I think that we can move on to the next discussion item, and that will be Dr. Sane. And that'll give Kelly a time to rest her voice a little bit. But before we get to Dr. Sane, we need to take about a 15, 10, 15-second break while the cameraman changed her disc. And when he gives me the okay, we'll pick back up with Dr. Sane.